All right, it's seven o'clock. Are you guys ready? All the meaning of the order start with the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participat- public participation, Elaine? We're gonna get to the solo property later, so we'll hold off. And Chad Moyer?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dr. Lenhart.
Yes, so I live at fifteen Lenhart Road, and there's currently a house being built next to me, which fine and dandy. However, I've been having multiple issues with water runoff. I've talked to Scott multiple times about it. I've called out here to Jennifer and talked to her about it multiple times. And the retention pond that was put in there is obviously not sufficient enough to handle the runoff if it flooded and overflowed last week during the storm. That was not a big rain event. And to make things worse, the following day, there was a contractor there pumping the retention pond out, which I don't even think is legal. And I guess I kinda wanna know what's being done about it, or what's going to be done about it, because it should not be my burden to take on somebody else's water that their system can't handle.
Correct. Um, we did, I did get your message, and I did reach out to these guys, and they did talk to the contractor. Where was, did you handle it, Jeff?
Yeah. Yeah, we had, um, so when we got the complaint, first Chad had reached out to township, our office. I had the builder's name, called them, made them aware of the situation. When I figured out what was going on, the contractor was doing pumping that they shouldn't have. Uh, given the amount of rain that we had, I asked them to just stop immediately instead of trying to correct the situation, just to let some of the water go down. But the, the pond itself, and honestly, to say it was undersized, they designed it according to the stormwater ordinance. I mean, they had a recorded, um, plan that was part of that land development. And that pond was part of that plan, had been reviewed and approved. That, that storm was past weekend or the past week. We had, we had ponds that were for full developments down to other individual properties where it was overflowing. I think it's kinda tough to try to gauge that storm on what it can handle and what it can't, just because we're seeing it everywhere. It wasn't really a heavy storm, but it was consistent for a very long time. Just the ground was saturated, and it was just, it was occurring all over the place. They did not have enough property stabilized at the time. They understood what they were requesting. If they did pump back out again, I wasn't aware that they're doing it. I mean, there, there isn't anything other than that that was going on that we're out there looking for. I drove past that same day, and it looked like they had stopped doing the pumping when I was past it, but.
Yeah, the pond was empty at that point, so it wasn't anything to pump anymore.
Yeah, so it wasn't really, I, I hadn't seen anything past that that was occurring that they were doing wrong after that, but I'm not to say that they're not gonna try it again.
But I guess my, my concern is, is this is not the first time that I've called about it. Like, they have, I mean, they have a pump going into the basement window continuously. There are sediment bags there. I mean, I have pictures, I have videos of them pumping it over top of the sediment bags. So you flooding my backyard. This was like the very beginning stage, like this is, so this is like the third to fifth time that this has happened.
So he called me the first time, we addressed it right then. I haven't heard anything from him since, until now. So then when he addressed it again, we went out and addressed it, um, with them, so I, if there was any in-between, I didn't know about it.
But I guess how many, like, how many strikes do they get, like?
Yeah, so what's, what's?
Well, I didn't know there was a second, that was.
So, so if they do something wrong like that?
We asked them to correct it. They stopped. To the best of my knowledge, they did. They came, once they put in the house, which again was a few months after he first called. From what I understand, they have water that's just getting into the house. They don't electric to the house. So all they can do is pump it, otherwise that basement that's just being built is filling with water. And that's, that's an issue. I'm not sure what we can do other than, they need to pump it out. What I told them is to pump it through a sediment bag, which is what they're supposed to do. Pump, have that sediment bag above the pond from where there's, where the water's supposed to be controlled, and wait till it's not a rain event, so that it's not gonna overflow and have the same issues that he's had. Other than that, I told him to stabilize the property. From what I saw, it wasn't stabilized. And that, that was, I think it was Thursday. I was off on Friday, so I didn't have a chance to really get back there and double check it. But that's, again, if they're not following through with what they're supposed to, then we'll just, we'll have to get on them. Again, they made the first mistake when they first started putting the pond. They were trying to pump around it. We said no. To me, it's been a few months. I thought they were in compliance until we just had that rainstorm. So if it is continuing, now I know it's continuing, we can follow up with it, but.
I mean, is it even legal to pump out a retention pond?
No. They can do it if they're, if they're gonna go through that bag, they're permitted to do that. But if they're, if they don't need to, and they can, they shouldn't be pumping that out the way they're doing. No. But what I understood is they're pumping out the basement. I didn't know they went to the pond and started pumping that out until you're saying it now.
How long was that? Thursday?
When were they pumping the pond out?
Yeah, that was, I believe, Thursday.
So that was months after you?
That was the same day that I called. So if they're doing that the same day after I said stop doing work, then I think we should. I'm assuming you have photos of that?
Yeah, yeah, I, actually, I sent all the photos to you that I, that I'd taken.
Oh, and that was before I contacted them? So, yeah, I don't know if they were doing it after I talked them out. I told them.
Were they doing it prior to this, to this Thursday, this last rain event?
So they just, they just put the retention pond in probably within the last couple of weeks. But before that, they were pumping the basement out, and then pumping it over top of the sediment bags. Like, I've already contacted Sherk, I've contacted Chris Wade from Wellbill, and obviously Scott, Jen, to make them aware of it. But like I said, I mean, how many times does my, does my backyard, my shed have to be underwater before something is?
Well, it, yeah, it shouldn't continue. I mean, again, I thought they took care of it, and this was the second time they tried to sneak by during this rain event to do this. So if this is an issue, I, yeah, we'll approach it so it doesn't happen again. If they do again, then we'll hit them with the violations.
And let's not wait. I think people in this township are taking this too lightly, Scott.
Okay, again, I was notified twice.
I'm almost to the point where I wanna ask.
And it was separated by a few months. I mean, it's not like I was trying to let anything slide.
But it's not that they didn't know what they were doing was wrong. It's not their first day.
I agree with you. I agree.
They a hundred percent know they're doing it wrong. Stay in touch. All right. Approval of the minutes from March eleventh. I make a motion of approving it. Pause second. All in favor?
Food enforcement report, Pratt.
All right. For the period, we issued twelve permits, a total improvement value of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. Lot of roof permits. Other issues was kind of light for a change. The hearing was held for immissible authority. I think they were successful in their appeal this time. We had a note here in our file concerning fifteen Lenhart. Scott's been addressing that. Property out at fourteen four ninety-two Coats Town Road. Having a meeting with that property owner, supposed to be yesterday, but you got, um, about this commercial property, what he can do there, what he can't do. Yeah, I don't have too much of a report this one.
All right. SEO report for March twenty twenty-four. Doesn't look like there's too much on there. Any questions? Police report.
All right, for March two thousand twenty-four, township, one hundred and thirty-two incidents, nine crash investigations, issued twelve citations, fifty-three vehicle stops. CI's been pretty busy for about forty-seven hours, and a couple, a couple incidents, drug possession, we assisted adult probation, township residents, that's some meth, cocaine, man, filled out of it, filed charges on that. Recovered stolen vehicle, parked at one of our businesses, that was stolen right in city. Luckily, the bad guys aren't real smart. We watched them get out of stolen vehicle and walk right into an apartment video. So that was pretty easy. They were charged, taken in custody. We had a burglar residence and a vehicle theft. They entered the house, they got the keys from inside the residence, couple small items taken. And then we actually recovered a vehicle later that evening, which was fairly close to the residence. PFA violation, charged and filed against defendant, and we got a warrant for that. Uh, we assisted home decover, recovery stolen equipment. They have GPS in their, in their equipment in case anybody didn't know. They'll track you down from anywhere. And it was located on a, on a property. However, the individual, just for everybody's knowledge, that he bought it off Facebook Marketplace. It looked like early on legit. Guy gave him a driver's license, which turned out it was fake. And unfortunately, the guy's out ten thousand dollars, but we took the equipment back from him. So just be careful when you guys are doing stuff online, especially Facebook. The guy appeared legit all the way around. Turns out it was all fake, so. And don't meet people online. That's not good either. Theft, I know we got, we got hit again. One of the businesses, line two twenty-two, there's still stealing catalytic converters. That's still open. We have no leads on that. And then multiple non-crime domestics.
So, thank you, Chief. Do you have any questions for Chief? All right, thank you. Murder will. Hard home report. Ballot town. Walber Funeral Home, final land development.
So they were in front of the planning commission this past beginning of the month. They made a recommendation. They are here tonight. If you'd like to see what it is they're presenting and, and go through that, because the planning commission did have a recommendation for the board, but if you wanna just kinda go through the plan with them real quick. Just to clarify, it was somewhat of a smaller land development plan that they're doing. They went right from a sketch to a final. But just giving the amount of, I encourage us on the property, and they've got a few developments on that property in the past couple of years. They had to go through this, this process. While he's doing that, I can kinda give you a quick summary.
Go ahead.
I'll show you a picture. In the back of the actual funeral home building itself are two existing buildings. Between the two of them, they're gonna have to cut back the embankment a little bit. They're putting in a, I believe it's a five-car garage, five-car garage that they're gonna put in. There were parking spaces in front of it. They're gonna have those as employee only, so when there are services or any type of event going on, the, the amount of parking they need for personnel is fine for what they're proposing. It's kind of a unique situation, parking garage, but they're required about ten spaces and put seven in front there that they can move them if they need to. But with that said, I'll just describe what they're doing here.
Go ahead. Yeah, good evening. Thank you for having me. It's Walber Funeral Home, fourteen three nine Chris Town Road. So the existing facilities all up here. They wanna put in a five-way garage back here at the rear of the property. Just to expand their use. We got, there's a swell back here. We're just pushing this grade out. Move it there to handle this, the, the extra runoff from the impervious reporting infiltration bed right here. It is, as far as we're aware, we're in compliance with this to Mar management ordinance. I know one of the things that came up was, we're maintaining this sanitary sewer through this. We have a note on the plan to, the builder said that they, they do this all the time. They build over top of the lateral. It is, that's the existing setup here. This is the existing perimeter that the sanitary sewer, that's an on-lot septic, so this is just a lateral from this building to their underground septic there. He had asked to put, um, a detail for this. There's an existing infiltration bed here for stormwater from this, probably from this parking lot. We do, we did find a detail for that, so we'll have that on the revised plan that we submit for the grant as conditional approval. Other than that, I don't think there's anything else outstanding. We do have EMS approval from the conservation district. There weren't any other outside ADC approvals required.
There is, with the plan, as he said, there are some minor revisions, additions there that we're looking for clarification on some of the, the lighting, as he said, with the stormwater. With that said, they were very minor, where the plan shouldn't change, and the planning commission did recommend a, the board ran a, an approval for the final plan.
Was there any other?
It was conditional on the March twenty-second. Some discussion, but no.
How much more am I gonna shut the edit?
It's just the spilling, that's it, so seventy-five thirty-two.
Typically, something like that may only need the, um, stormwater approval, but they've already had the land development go through, and they had another building that they added on, so they're really kind of at the end of that allowance.
All right.
We're gonna need a new stormwater agreement after this. I mean, the, there is an existing agreement for the previously approved improvements, but with the new addition, I think it's necessary to record a new agreement.
Agreed, and that was in, that was part of the discussion with, uh, planning commission Michelle, that the agreement should be amended. The, the money, the cost associated with that, it, it's very minor, the amount of stormwater they're adding for this, that as long as it's captured in the agreement, should probably be fine with the security they already posted.
They just wanna make sure that the plan for the new stormwater improvements is covered by the agreement that required at least in the.
Agreed. So, yeah, they're here tonight for the request for approval of final plan conditional upon the letting.
I make a motion to approve it. Pause second. All in favor? Thank you.
Can we add the cost estimate?
No, that was one of the.
Lifeline. Hi, good evening. Again, my name's Keith McMinn. I'm the director of Lifeline. I'm based at the Hershey Medical Center. Lifeline EMS, uh, provides EMS for, um, there, over thirty-eight municipalities in the eight county area in central Pennsylvania. Uh, as you're aware, we were here a couple of months ago discussing EMS contract. Um, and I apologize, I was not able to be at the March meeting. I know you had requested that. I was away with my family that week, so.
That's all right.
So, uh, we are asking, uh, all of our municipalities that we provide service to, to, um, consider in their next budget, a, a contribution to offset the costs of providing the service. Uh, as I mentioned the last time I was here, um, we are a not-for-profit health system. Uh, of course, patients who are transported from this municipality to our hospital, we benefit from that. But overall, EMS and the way EMS is reimbursed through insurance, we take a direct loss on the ambulance service in all of the municipalities that we provide service to. So what, uh, I'm sure the municipality feels the, the strains of inflation, and we're feeling that also. Cost of personnel, the cost of fuel, ambulances are now two hundred and fifty thousand, which is a crazy amount of money to purchase a new ambulance. So we're coming back to the, the, all the municipalities that we have contracts with. The current contract here self-renews every year, uh, unless either party want needs to change it. And I will tell you that we will be in a position where we will need to, uh, change that arrangement coming, uh, coming the next calendar year for your new budget year. What we, uh, what we do is we like to see, or we assess a per capita fee, meaning we take the census of the individuals who live in that particular municipality and assess a per capita fee, uh, and then ask the municipality to contribute, contribute that amount, okay? At, at a minimum, we would like to see a five dollar per capita fee with a five-year contract that escalates to seven dollars per capita in year four and five. That's the minimum that we are going to ask our municipalities to contribute, uh, beginning, uh, next calendar year. Uh, in addition, as you're aware, this municipality is serviced out of the Fleetwood Fire Station. We have two ambulances there that service Fleetwood, Richmond, Roscoe Manor, and Rockland. I, I'm not from the area, so I, I struggle with the pronunciation of Roscoe Manor every time. We are speaking with those municipalities also, and we're asking that, um, we currently pay a lease of twenty-eight thousand per year to house the ambulance there. That's, um, a, a fee that the Penns, that the Penn State Health pays, uh, and we would like the municipalities to contribute, to offset that, that cost of the lease, and that is, uh, an arrangement we've done in some of the other areas also. Calendar year, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, four hundred and fifty-two nine-one-one calls in the township. John is the EMS manager here in Berks County for Penn State Health, and he manages the operation out here, but we ran the numbers earlier today, and it was about, uh, four hundred, four hundred and fifty-two was the number of responses in, uh, in Richmond Township out of the Fleetwood, uh, station. So, um, happy to take any questions or, uh,
With that, I notice you guys do a fire report. Do you want me to, I submit one to Fleetwood. You guys want a monthly report as well?
That, that would be great.
Okay. Just to show the activity of that.
Yeah, so we wanna, we wanna pay our fair share. So my concern is, uh, we've upped it from nothing to, what do we, what was on the budget structure? Seventy-two hundred.
Yeah.
Um, you're asking for eighteen thousand to twenty-four thousand. Where, where do you come up with these numbers as far as, I mean, did Penn State, did Penn State split off the, the ambulance department? Or, or how is it, is it still part of Penn State? How, how does, how do you come up with your numbers as a nonprofit, and then, that's my first question.
Yeah, so, so, uh, Lifeline, Berks County is part of Penn State Health Milton Ness Hershey Medical Center. It's not a separate organization. It falls under the responsibilities of Penn State Health, uh, which is a not-for-profit. We, again, come up with this number of eighteen to twenty-four uh, as a five dollar per head fee in the municipality, and prior to signing the contract, we would agree on what the census is at the time, right, based on the last census numbers? And then in year co, in contract year four and five, we would reassess, you know, patient, population moving out. I hear about building, population moving in. We would reassess that at a seven dollar per capita fee. That would be part of the fee structure.
So where do you come up, I, I understand.
Okay, I, I know where you're coming from.
Do you run your own separate P and L for this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there's a separate P and L.
We're, we're basically a cost center, another med system, on a med center. So how that works is, we look at what's it cost us to operate Berks County, and then more specifically each station. And what, what does that revenue bring in, and then what's the downstream revenue of that? And then we look at what are shortfalls, which is considerable. But, I mean, it's a PR thing. I mean, there's, there's a lot of good that comes from a side of ambulances. So that's where that number's coming. That five dollars of seven dollars does not cover our total shortfall by a ton.
We will still take a direct loss on the service, uh, even with those numbers, with the cost of inflation. Again, I'm sure the township feels that, right?
Yeah.
We still will take a direct loss in the service, but Penn State Health is no longer in a position to provide the service for free anymore to the municipalities. We're just not. Healthcare is a really difficult, uh, business to be in right now. COVID, ravage the finances of healthcare institutions and, uh, you know.
Did I answer your question?
You did.
Okay.
You did. But when you came here a couple of years ago, no problem, Fleetwood's getting out, we're gonna cover, and I realize things changed.
Things changed a lot, yeah.
I, I, I realized things changed, but the sit-up here, and now we had a, a private ambulance company that came every year for money. We said, no, we don't, we don't have to donate. As soon as they go out of business, you guys are coming with five to seven dollars a, a, a patient, and that, and it's just, now we don't have competition. Maybe we should have readdressed it there. I don't know. Hindsight's twenty-twenty. A little frustrating for me, and then to know that you guys are split off in your own P and L and the, the hospital, you know, I, I, I don't know. We cannot keep pushing this burden on the residents. Medicare is probably your issue. That's probably the problem.
That's, this one.
You know what I mean? Private health insurance, I know what you pay. I know what I pay for an ambulance ride, and I, I can't imagine that you lose money on that, but Medicare, Medicaid, whatever. I, I, I mean, yet all that problems come back and split up on the residents of the township. Not your fault. I just don't know how much we can sit here and just keep doling out without putting it back on the residents. Everything. It's just difficult.
So the Medicare and Medicaid issue, you, you hit the nail on the head there. Our average reimbursement for transport, when you, so sixty-five to sixty-eight percent of the patients we transport are Medicare, right? Our average cost overall, we get about three hundred and eighty-eight dollars per transport. You can imagine my cost to provide that service for one ambulance call is much more than that.
But why is it coming back on the residents and the taxpayers and the landowners of this township? I mean, that's not fair when the government doesn't fix their problem, and it just pushes us back to local government trying to stretch our resources. I know my ambulance bill ten years ago was twelve hundred dollars, because I had. I know my ambulance bill ten years ago was twelve-hundred dollars because I had insurance, right? I mean, I, I don't know how we fixed the problem, but how is it fair to come back to the municipality? And I understand where you guys are at. Trust me. I just don't know what the answer is. They asked us for eighteen to twenty-five thousand, not a huge number in, in, in the, in the, in the greater scheme of things, but the timing sucks. You know, we had an ambulance and he came here faithfully, asked for money everywhere. We're not going to give money to a private, to a private ambulance company when we have nonprofits doing it for nothing. Why would we, and obviously he couldn't make it for a reason and now here we are.
Well, there's, there's, there's a lot, there's three just in the county that shut down this month.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's happening, it's happening everywhere.
Actually, one of the areas that generated this discussion was Coats Town, right? Fleet, Fleetwood asked us, you guys asked us to come talk about that. Yeah, I mean, Coats Town went out of business, the municipalities were not contributing at all to that service. We're seeing it across Pennsylvania and across the nation. Small ambulance associations, either not-for-profit or for-profit, are closing their doors because they just can't provide the service anymore. We're fortunate to have a big health system that backs us. But even our big health system can't continue to take the type of loss that we're taking on the service when all the costs are going up, they're not, with no sign of them return, returning to a, you know, a normal inflation rate, so.
I appreciate him not giving you a hard time.
I don't think you are.
I get where you're coming from, but I have residents to answer to. And every time we go back to the well for something, it's, you know, health insurance premiums go through the roof.
Yes.
And then the government takes care of the rest and they're not paying their fair share. And then you want to put that burden back on the residents. It's, it's, it's the system, so. Or in my opinion.
We understand.
We agree with you a hundred percent. It's, the, the problem is the reimbursement rates. Insurance companies are there to not pay us, I mean.
We, we understand. I, I'm not taking it as if, that you are frustrated with us.
Right.
We're just, we provide really good service to this area. And we need it at a, at a cost, unfortunately. And we're just not, our, the leaders above me are just not able to continue to provide the service without getting some type of, I'm calling it a subsidy, maybe that's the wrong, but help subsidize the service.
Did anybody, did any of you guys go to the, the Alberta College?
Bangwith.
The Bangwith. Oh, right.
C D L J.
That was the main focus, if you could talk, but Fleetwood was there. We were at Roscoe Manor, Rockland. I didn't see any of you guys there. But I, I might have missed you. There was probably a hundred people there. The, the thrust of that meeting was the crisis in EMS. They had a presenter there. Anthony Martin was there from the Department of Health.
We, we wanted, again, I couldn't be here last month, but like, we want to get this information to you because you're going to start your budget planning soon, right?
And that's, we need it for budget.
Right. We, we operate on a fiscal year, but you guys operate on a calendar year as well.
Right, right.
Yeah, so we just wanted to, and, and whatever type of additional information that's needed after the meeting, back and forth, we'll come to workshops, I'll come to the, to the next meeting, whatever information you need. I, I just know that, like, we, we, we're going to have to adjust the contract in some manner for, for January. And how we adjust that will work with you. We are appreciative of the seventy-two hundred that was put in the budget. I would have preferred to have a discussion with you before because I, I knew we were headed in this direction and I'm sorry if the tone of the email was not, was, you know, really sucks trying to communicate by email, so.
It does.
Yes, it does.
It does.
But.
We will have, we will have open communication here when we go out this fall. And we understand where you're coming from.
Sure.
It's just hard to put it back on the residents.
You know, again, I'm not opposed if we get Fleetwood together, you know, if we all want to sit down. I don't know how the municipal world works as far as sunshine laws and stuff, but I'd be more than happy to, to meet with you guys. I mean, I'll show you the equipment that we have. Fleetwood's, we don't have no complaints about ambulances.
So, especially on the idea of helping with the station, station lease, I would, this is a recommendation. I'm not here to tell you how to make decisions in your municipality, but I'd recommend that you do talk to Fleetwood and Roscoe Manor and Rockland. What we've seen work well in other areas, especially Leighton County, is where several municipalities in rural areas go together and they divide up that particular cost based on their share of usage. That, that has worked really well with some of our other contracts.
Would that reduce the amount you'd be asking for?
No, our, our, our minimum ask is the five dollars per head fee and then to help cover the station lease. And if you, and if you, if you, look, if you come back to me and say, we can do this and not that, I will take that to my executive leader, but that, 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 those are our minimum requirements in, in January, they are. But I certainly will, you know, the seventy-two hundred was, is not, is not enough. That doesn't help us get to where we, get to where we need to be.
Well, where does Fleetwood pay?
We're, we're doing the same thing with Fleetwood. We're having the same discussion with Fleetwood, okay?
We, the, the four municipalities in this area that I just mentioned that are covered for the, have not paid anything until, until the seventy-two hundred that you guys approved, okay?
And are you actually paying out pocket cash for that rent?
Yeah, that's, that's our budget. We, we pay, we pay twenty-eight thousand a year. It's a monthly, it's a monthly lease to house the ambulance there and have a, a room for the employees. Yeah. We, we pay that.
All right. So, that's, that's what we were thinking, if we can split that up based on usage, so not one municipality is bearing that whole cost.
And, and that's how that was navigated in some other municipalities, similar in a rural area where that, that's how, there was an agreement amongst the four municipalities that I'll pitch in this amount and I'll pick baseball usage. That, okay, I'm not here to tell you how to do that. I'm just suggesting that if you aren't aware, that's how it was done in another place.
Would you want the relative volume? I mean, the report that you're talking about, I assume would be activity here in Richmond Township. But does the board want to understand the calls for their whole regional service area? Just so you have a big picture idea of the volume?
The bigger picture would be the P and L for me, if that's something you can share with me.
That's, that's something that you would have to do?
Yeah, I would have to ask. I, I'm not.
If it's a nonprofit, I mean, I'm just, I got to understand what you guys are asking for, so I can go to the, the voters and say, this is what we need. And you guys do a great job with the ambulance. We need ambulance. No one's saying we don't need ambulance.
Right.
It's a service we need. It's just like, we went from nothing for thirty years. We had a private entity asking for, we shut that down. You guys came in. How long are you in Fleetwood?
Twenty-seven.
Seven years you came in?
Twenty-seventeen is what.
Twenty-seventeen, there's no change. We're going to take care of you. Not a problem.
Yeah.
And now here we are. And I understand things change.
Yeah, they change.
I understand things change, but my health insurance goes up every year. And whether the government fixes this or not, pushing it back on us, and it's our responsibility. It's just a hard pill to swallow. I'm not saying you guys aren't doing it.
Completely understand. I do. I know where you're coming from and all the other municipalities have a, they have similar concerns. I, I get it. I do.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thanks for coming.
Happy, happy to return anytime.
All right.
Thank you.
Would I send you the report?
Yeah, that's fine.
And what I'll do is I'll break it down by what our Fleetwood Station does. Richmond Township's about forty percent of our volume, so I can show you what we're doing in Fleetwood.
So, what municipality you cover here, Fleetwood, Roscoe Manor?
Part of Roscoe Manor, part of Rockland.
Part of Rockland.
I, I know we can provide the number of calls, the number of calls in other municipalities. I can tell you the percentage of patients, well, I'll tell you, the percentage of patients from nine-one-one calls in Richmond that go to our St. Joe's Hospital is twenty-six percent. He ran this today for us. The other thirty-some percent go to either Tower Health, the other, the other, to, to get to a hundred percent, the other ones go to the hub out. So, I mean, that, that, that is, but as far as sharing the P and L, I don't have the approval to share a Penn State P and L with you. I certainly can ask.
You can ask if you say no, just let me know.
Sure.
Would be interesting just to help make our decisions, you know, came from all of a sudden.
All right.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Motion to approve the kind of cathy bike ride Saturday, June first. They've done this before. Have you done a similar route?
They actually are doing it on Saucony Road for more time this time, they changed the route a little bit.
Good question. Yep. June first, it's on Saucony Road and Coats Mill Road in the township. Go ahead and see how many cycles there are going to be. Eight-thirty to nine-fifteen. You have the insurance here?
I think they're running to them right here. Yeah, it looks like, I mean.
I make a motion here for all in favor. Discussion, Berks County Waste Authority, sponsorship. Drink weeks. Yep. They have spring and fall household cleanup, hazardous waste, paper shredding. If you look on their website, they have a full time collection center over on Hilltop Road in Leesport. Collect comics and different things.
What do we hear about?
Have not yet. We passed it up, passed it through.
It said sponsored by the county. We don't pay county tax. I'm a two with not doing anything. Okay, Berks County Solid Waste Management Plan.
This is a new plan that is for the county and there is a comment period this month. This is the month that you would be required to approve submitting any comments on this plan back to the county. I don't know that I have any comments. Thirty dollars, Joe. I didn't see it yet.
Okay, motion to approve a pension withdrawal. I wrote that both, oh, sorry. All in favor? Aye. Motion for the board to ratify the grant application. Is this anywhere else on the agenda that we'll approve? So, you got to talk to them.
Yeah. Do I do it all together?
Yeah, let's do it all together. Old business we're doing, solar farm.
Start with a, I can just start with an update on, on site work. They were trying to get back in there last week to start the soil amendments. They started on some of that today. But they really just, from what we saw, it was more of a fine-tuning of equipment. But they are looking to get back into that.
You want me to talk about the rest?
I would assume that's part of this, but.
It has come to the town's attention that there has been a transmission of electricity from the site to the grid. It has been the township's position that the transmission of electricity to the grid was not permitted until all of the zoning conditions of the township ordinance were satisfied, which includes completion of the stormwater facilities. The work on the stormwater facilities, as we know, and when I say that, I'm speaking broadly to include the soil amendments. That work was stopped in the fall, in part because township asked that the work stop because of the inability to get ground cover over the winter months. Township did some investigation about how long the electricity has been leaving the site and going on to the grid. Based on the research that township has done, it appears that that activity has been occurring since the beginning of December of 2023. So, contact was made with the developer and with, with the owner. Hillstone and Council Board, Hillstone, it's a Pennsylvania council, is here tonight. We had discussion, that is myself and the attorney for Hillstone, about the township's perspective on this. Hillstone has a different point of view. Some of what they have said to me was that the contractor was handling testing of the site and, you know, there were explanations offered. But the bottom line is that the township has a position, the developer or the owner has a different position. But I think from the township's point of view, point of view, clearly there's been a violation of the zoning ordinance based on how the township is interpreting its zoning ordinance. And my discussion with the Hillstone attorney was to the effect that there had to be consequences for this transgression of the township's understanding of its zoning ordinance. So, part of that discussion was that there are processes for penalties to be determined. If the township were to issue a notice of violation to the owner of the property, and if that notice of violation was appealed to the zoning hearing board and the zoning hearing board found that there was a violation, then the township could seek the imposition of fines for the violation. There is, again, the possibility of a successful appeal by the developer in that case, but there is certainly a considerable exposure to liability if there is litigation of what the township perceives to be a zoning violation. Under the zoning ordinance, the penalties for a zoning violation can be up to five-hundred dollars a day. So, that is some background. Part of this is also the fact that, as a result of those discussions I had with the Hillstone attorney, there was a request made for a temporary certificate of occupancy, what we call a CO. And that would be a process to legitimize the transmission of electricity to the grid from the site until such time as the stormwater facilities and the soil amendments were all completed. And a permanent certificate of occupancy could be issued. And a permanent certificate of occupancy could be issued. So that letter with a request for the temporary CO was received by the township the beginning of last week, which in my opinion is the date when the the developer or the owner of the solar farm was attempting to resolve the appearance of a zoning violation. So I want to give them credit for at that point finally coming to the township and saying, we need your permission to transmit electricity to the grid. We are seeking your permission and this is our request for permission to do that. They're not in any way taking the position that they don't have a duty to complete all of the stormwater facilities and the soil amendments that are all required as part of the plan approval. They are acknowledging that they have the duty to do all of those things. And in fact, if we had more cooperative weather, they would have started all of that at the beginning of April, but unfortunately, as we know, the weather has not been cooperative. So where this takes us today is that I have been working with the developers' representatives to bring to the township a settlement agreement that would resolve the dispute that is pending about the violation of the zoning ordinance. And that settlement agreement would say that in exchange for a financial payment to the township, there would be a temporary certificate of occupancy. And that payment is calculated on the basis of, and this is not in the agreement, but this is how I came up with the number on the number of days from December 1, 2023, until the date that the township received the letter asking for the temporary certificate of occupancy. So that number of days times the penalty, which could be assessed through a zoning enforcement process results in the number of $58,000. Hillstone, the developer of the solar project, does not concede that they have violated the zoning ordinance. But I think the township should recognize that there is a considerable acknowledgement of responsibility, which is represented by the willingness of Hillstone to pay the township with respect to this zoning dispute that we have. The agreement would provide that in exchange for the payment, township would issue the temporary certificate of occupancy for a period of 120 days. That 120 days would give Hillstone an opportunity to substantially complete the outstanding stormwater facilities, improvements, and soil amendments and other remaining stormwater work that are required by the approved plans. But the agreement also provides that if they have made a good faith effort towards that goal and have not completed it within that 120 day schedule, that they would ask for additional time and the township would reasonably consider granting that additional time based on their progress and their serious effort in meeting the goal. Part of the agreement would also be to say that if Hillstone does those things, that by entering into this agreement, we would, the township would not pursue any zoning violation for the issue of connecting to the grid for that period of time from December 1, 2023, until they submitted the request for the temporary certificate of occupancy. So they are, you know, basically we are agreeing that there will not be an enforcement action, but that does not mean that they are not subject to compliance with township ordinances other than the issue of this compliance period that is in question right now. I think that's the gist of the agreement of Scott and Jeff. Is there any key points that you could think of omitted from this summary for the board?
I think you've hit it pretty good, Chris.
So having said all that, it is my recommendation to the board supervisors that you consider approving this agreement. Again, it's a significant acknowledgement of responsibility and part of what we have communicated to Hillstone is that they must be accountable to the township, that we cannot you know, we cannot fail to enforce our regulations. There has to be consequences for their conduct. So I'm ready to answer any questions you might have and also the attorney for Hillstone, Mr. Andy Miller is here. And if you want him to speak about this or ask him any questions, you certainly can do that as well.
I'm not sure that he has any questions that I want to answer. He represents Hillstone. It's been a frustrating process from the beginning. They have disregarded everything this township has asked them to do from the beginning. It's very disappointing that they went blatantly and flipped on the switch without this, when they knew what our, we had talked about with the ordinance. They could have came and asked for a temporary certificate to occupy. We've had multiple, multiple, multiple meetings with tons of hours discussing this, trying to just hoping they would do what they agreed to do. But here we are. The board of supervisors here is very disappointed and very upset and very mad as how this went down. We got rolled over. There's, there's stuff we can do, there's right, wrong, but there's limitations of what we can expect to accomplish. And we feel this is the best outcome for where we're at. It's, it's, it's disappointing. The end goal is still to have the soil amended and doing everything that they have promised us to do. We're gonna do everything in our power to hold them accountable to that. We have cash surety to get it done if they do not. But that's where we're at. I, I don't, I don't know that there's any more that I can add. It's just disappointing the way this was handled. And it's disappointing that when I went online, it was just the direct disregard to this township. I expect that from Hillstone or, or someone out of town, maybe not Hillstone, but someone out of town or someone in this township that it's just a disregard to what we have tried to accomplish here. We've said what we, we did what we said from the very beginning to get this job done and get this project to where it is, and it's been a challenge from day one. So I don't know that, do you have any more to add?
No, I really have to get pretty much set. I think at this point, we just have to do what's in the best interest of the township. And I think that the arrangement, the agreement that you came up with there seems to make the most sense. I'd like to just put this behind me at this point. But I think that at this point, we should, I guess, first keep an eye on things. Try and get it done, get it on the line, move forward.
Is there questions?
So just to understand everything, they're not gonna pay a dime. And they're just gonna get to proceed, right?
No, they're gonna pay 58,000.
They're gonna pay 58,000.
And that amount is the most that the township could have gotten through a fine procedure.
And litigation.
But you said, for example, they blatantly missed everything that you sat up there for months and said.
Blatantly.
And you're gonna let them go.
But we gotta be realist. We gotta be realist what we can and cannot do.
So your insurance will take care of it if you fight it. It happened when I was in the office for so long. And to sit here and let them get away with that, I think disgraces this whole township. Absolutely disgrace. I can't imagine what your uncle would feel like sitting there right now, what he went through in this township. And now we're paying money as a payoff.
It's not a payoff, it's a fine.
But you're gonna let it continue. Fine or we're saying not to get away.
There's limited stuff that we can get done. And the insurance doesn't, insurance never pays for anything. You pay for insurance down the road. The end result is we want to get the land, what they promised to do, and get that done.
But do you think it's gonna work, Brian, when they, when you talk to conservation? And I've talked to Andy before. And I, the, the numbers that Scott you used are, are not reliable anymore because they rolled that far. Everybody agrees with that. Dean does.
But where is Dean? So where is Dean in conservation? They left us hanging out here to dry run. We're out here on an island by ourselves.
Well, Dean has contacted DEP, has a meeting set. But in the end result, you're setting a bad, bad example for the next person who comes in. Do what you want, pay the fine and move on. And the rest of us have to abide by the laws. And they don't because what? They're gonna pay the fine and move on because they have money and we don't? We have zoning for a reason. We have laws for a reason that we all abide by. Does money over trump that? Because you might lose, because you might get fined, because you might get sued? Really? Is that, is that what we're all about? You're worried?
We are not.
Well, it seems like it.
We are not. We are not. The, the fine, the money doesn't mean anything to them. They're gonna run it and do it the same. And then here we are with an unfinished project with dirt, water, the whole nine yards.
You got the money to play back.
That's not the end result that we want. We want to get this project complete.
And I heard that. And I heard you sit there and say they will not do anything till this project is done.
Correct. And they blatantly disregarded that.
So stop it right now. Stop it right now. Your word has always meant something to us in this community. Don't be scared. Make DEP come to the table, make them all come to the table. I got a letter from Land Preservation. You guys gonna handle that one? I'm gonna be in violation because of the erosion of my water. You guys gonna handle that one?
I think that's, a lot of that is a whole different matter.
It doesn't matter. We know where the water is coming from. I was in violation for 15 years, 20 years.
Yeah, and I've been keeping a pretty good eye on that. And I've been looking at the water flow there and I know what it, I haven't familiar with that for the last 25 years. I'm real familiar with it. A lot of what you're seeing there is passive water. I know we're welling majority of it. I've been there every, everywhere. I can't calculate what's coming off the north side, but I can certainly see, gives me an example of what's coming off the south side. Very little. So there's another ongoing issue there that you're gonna have to deal with at some point. And that is passive water. Always been there, it's gonna get continuously worse. And how you're gonna handle that is up to you. But I think at the end of the day, you're gonna end up putting some waterways in there to keep it flowing and let it pass there as it has been going. It's the only solution I see.
They checked the permits that no water would leave the site. You aware of that?
We wanted to minimize the water that left the site. Minimize it.
I mean, we never, there was never any.
We have the documents.
Yeah, but it was.
We have the documents. Just stop.
As far as, as far as the stormwater permits and the review and the submission that they had, there was never a water from the site.
I didn't fill out the permit, Scott.
And I didn't either. Maybe you didn't review those permits. I'm just saying that what the township reviewed didn't say they weren't gonna have water leave the site. It was always to reduce everything by 20% from the township's end. And, and the reason I'm saying it is I'm worried DEP is very short sighted coming to the table now for everything they've done. And even when last fall, they talked about changing the soil, which is the sole reason they never were able to finish this before this. They put it on themselves, it was their own delay, there's the whole reason that problem happened. But when that came up, we addressed the complications. They did soil testing all over the site to show that their procedure, they said they were gonna follow, which is the ripping, which is the soil amendments and the telling the land that they will either meet or exceed what they said in the permits to the township. So I get worried the DEP is jumping in here and saying, we're gonna enforce this and they're not fully aware of what the township required from the start. And, and I think, I, I still have faith and hope that it will increase. That's the whole plan, but right now they're nowhere near the end.
So when Gary and you guys came up with the numbers for the size of the ponds and whatnot, you knew then that they were going to roll the whole farm?
No. But when we found out that they rolled the farm is when they had to follow through with ripping. And then they ran the testing to show that the infiltration was still there to achieve everything that they were supposed to do from the start. So when I say DEP, I feel like they're coming to the table a little late in the game. They were part of those conversations and I'm not sure why they didn't speak up in the fall about it. I don't.
So that meant nobody came out and evaluated that when they were excavating that property and rolling it with the compact rollers to tighten that up? Nobody came out and said, hey, what are you doing? You shouldn't be doing this. And that took them, I'll bet you, I would run across the street from that. And I'll bet you they spent a good three weeks with their rollers moving ground and they were really packing a little unit of what out of it.
And that's when we brought up their attention and we were wondering.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say. You mean, nobody came out in them three weeks from your office or anywhere else and said, wait a minute, what are you guys doing?
We did, that's what I'm telling you.
And, and they still kept doing it and nobody did nothing about it. And now we end up with this situation. Now, they had five to six guys out there today. So if you have five to six guys doing what they're supposed to do, how much they gonna get done in 120 days? So then what happens? So then they pay another fine. So now these five to six guys still do a little work. They're, they're just laughing. I, I, I'm sorry, they're just laughing. It, it's, it's big business and they're just laughing.
So again, we, we were out there and when that question came up, why you're rolling, that led to both the township and the Conservation District saying, well, then show us how you're gonna meet what the design is. That's when they did their testing again, ran the numbers again and said, we're either meeting or exceeding what we had on the original design. And again, DEP was part of that in the fall. And, and there was nothing more than an approval from them as well. So I'm not sure.
I have all this, all of them, Scott. I have all of them. This is the game we're gonna play. This is the game we're gonna play. They have it all. They checked it, Conservation has not been on board, they have been fighting to get DEP to the table, we can all agree to that. But they were violations, multiple violations that they checked, their guy checked, pushed it on to DEP, because they're the ones who laying down the law. And DEP has been slow to come to the table, for whatever reason, I can't, other than spec. But to say there has not been any violations, or to say there's not been any following of the permit is totally irresponsible on your part if you don't have it. Do you have it?
Their permit, I don't enforce DEP's permit.
Okay, I'm just asking you.
I don't enforce their permit.
Do you have their permit?
Yeah, we have their permit. And we don't enforce their permit.
And what does it say on there about hauling in of dirt to the project?
Again, I don't enforce their permit. I don't enforce their permit, and if, if you're taking that up with DEP and having those conversations, again, I would ask why they didn't act on this until now.
I can't answer that.
And that's the struggle we've had too.
We'd all want to answer that.
That's the struggle we've had, is we continue to ask, and they don't hold true to what they're enforcing.
I just can't believe we have these fine men up front folding to this pressure, is beyond me. It's beyond me. You wouldn't let any resident get away with this, they would shut them down right away. Go try to put, somebody move into a house without a permit. Go try and put animals on a building without a permit. And you would have been shut down immediately. This is, this is, this is unbelievable. I can't believe we're here, because I had the back thinking of these guys saying, we were going to do this, and we're gonna hold it down.
We don't need all this.
And we needed this permit, and they didn't get it. Now they're coming back to ask me for mercy, and you're gonna go get them. Is that how we raise our kids? I wonder they are doing it.
Tell me something, Ron. What's your best expected outcome of this whole thing?
To follow the permit. Whatever the permit says, that's what we all agreed to. And when the permit's not followed, it's just like, we had, when I was sitting on the board, we had a gentleman come in here who had his permit. But he decided to move his manure pit, forty or fifty feet. And Gary Craft stopped him in a heartbeat. And the reason he was moving it, was because his gravity flow gutters wouldn't work. He had his permit, they shut him down immediately till we had a conversation. And fixed the problem. He didn't not have a permit, he had a permit. They knew the process of this whole thing. They knew it. And then it came back in the fall and said, well, where do we really need to put the amended soils down? And we said, yes, as part of the agreement. They knew what they were doing, they know what they're doing to this day. Where's, where's MedEd in this? How can they be taking illegal energy off to a grid? Is beyond me.
We weren't aware that they were.
But they had to be.
I'm sure they were.
And there's no accountability to that?
It depends on how far we wanna go with this. We wanna come out with a good outcome out of this whole thing.
But giving them this kind of forgiveness, if you wanna call it, like, hey, you pay a fine, the big companies will do whatever you want. We will have nothing in this township. This township is now the wild, wild west. If you've got enough money, you do what you want. And you guys are just prudent.
I disagree with you, Ron, and we might have different opinions. And you can, you can make your argument, and I respect that. And I respect that. But at some point, you have to look at what it's gonna cost this township, and what we're gonna get out of it. The end result is to get these amended soils, to have the infiltration. We have over two million dollars of money in cash, and if they don't do that, we're gonna have to do that. You can sit there and say, hey, let's stop big business, you're like the politicians on TV, let's stop big business. If we could stop them, Ron, we would stop them today. But they'll just continue on, do you think five hundred, in my opinion, do you think five hundred dollars a day is anything to them? It's not.
And that's why it's a joke.
So, it's a joke, so what are we gonna get out of this? We gotta get this project finished. And we gotta get it done the way it was designed. DEP's not gonna help us. They didn't help us last year when we asked them, Drunk, Drunkamilla was here and said, hey, we're just making suggestions. They don't make suggestion to anybody in our township. This goes way above their pay grade. And here we are on an island, trying to do the best we can for the residents. And that's what, in our opinion, we're trying to do. It's not about the money, it's trying to hold them accountable. If we say no, they're not gonna shut it off. We'll go to court, this will be six, eight months, ten months, twelve months, who knows? That's how the law works in this country, and it's just a fact of life. So we gotta look at the facts that we have, and make the best decision that we can for this township. You think I'm pissed? I'm pissed that they blatantly disregard everything from day one. Everything. Flat out lie.
Don't let them get away with it.
There's only so much you can do.
And they know it.
And they know it, of course they know it.
The other thing that we can take into consideration here is the politics of this whole thing. This is a green energy deal. It's looked at very favorably by the county, by the state, by everybody. You go against this whole thing, and you're gonna come up against the wall with a lot of money. And I don't know that the litigation would go in our favor. Because that's just the way it is these days. I, for one, am not willing to risk that. I say we do.
Because it's not your farm.
But maybe if you let up against them, you have one of the people that will come step back to you and say, hey, you know what, if they have the cahoots to stand up against these knuckleheads, they're gonna hate you.
I don't think you understand what you're fighting here.
Any, anything that a big business can come into, we might as well say Richmond Township's open for business. That's the pitch you're paying, sometimes you have to fight for what's right. And fight for what you've been told and what you've been grown up to. And you stand up and you say, look, we fought for this township, and we lost, so be it. But these, these people who just want to just be hired guns and come in here, they know what's going on. Some of these people run townships in their own homes, they know what's going on. These are land reserved farms that you just ruined. I didn't need, I didn't need anything today. What happens twenty years from now, maybe. But today, I need now, we tear out an NRCS waterway, we blow it wide open, I get the brunt of it. And now it's my responsibility to go ahead and put in swales.
So at the end of the day, our goal is to cut down that water that's coming off the property, Ron. That was the goal from the beginning. We made our best effort. We have no support from DEP or the Conservation District. We're here on an island, trying to do the best we can. We didn't let them walk away from the project. We wouldn't have let them start up, but you're not gonna, there, there, you gotta be reasonable. You gotta be reasonable in your expectations. You can sit out there and think that pie in the sky, that you can stand up and you're gonna make a stand. Listen, if, if I thought we had a ten percent chance of doing that, we would all voted for that.
But you'll never know.
But it's not my money. It's the township's money. And the end result is, we want that project finished, so the water's not coming off that farm twenty percent less than what it went in. And you can agree with it or you can't, and we can have a different opinion, but that's where mine comes in.
I don't know how you can get that kind of numbers when they rolled the whole farm. Their permit didn't allow them to roll the whole farm.
So then why did DEP enforce it, Ron?
And I can't answer that.
So here we are on an island, we can't stop them without any help.
I'm pretty confident that they need the amended soils, they're doing what they agreed to do. They're gonna get the reduction that they're looking for. I put a lot of time and effort in looking at that water flow up there, Ron. There is no way, no way, that you're gonna stop that water that comes off that well.
They didn't fill out the permits, Sam. That's part of the reason we went along with what we did, because of the way they filled out the permit. The way Gary Craft came to me and what he told me. That's what I went with, but I expected the people on the board to stand firm, and let's make sure this works. But this makes sure it works on our way, in our laws, not somebody else's. It's not, how can it work, Sam, when they rolled it?
I mean, part of what you're saying is what Gary promised, and, I mean, from start to finish on this, he's been reviewing this all along. And when the rolling came up, he's been the one reviewing every bit of this. And he said, this is what you need to do, you need to recertify everything in your study to say that you rolled this. You have a detail on your plan saying, if we roll it, we're going twenty inches deep to rip this. We're gonna amend all those grasses again and put it back there. The only way to prove that is to submit us the design again, and they redesigned the whole thing based off of rolling it. And if that, that doesn't support what we were asking them to do, I don't know what would. And that permit you're saying they filled out, it's not the township's permit. I know we have that in hand, but that's for DEP to enforce, and they have it. We've been begging them to be involved, and they're not involved. All we can do is keep continuing with the township's design, and part of the township's design is above and beyond what DEP requires. What I worry is, if they're gonna challenge this, they're not taking into consideration what the township put into those requirements. What Gary's requirements were to say, you have to reduce by this much, and you have to infiltrate this much. And if they come back and they look at those rolled areas and say, well, you overdesigned from what we have, it may fall very short from what they think is gonna happen here. And I hope it doesn't.
Those numbers, were they designed after the panels were put out to be ripped, or after? I mean, what part, what percentage of that farm is typically gonna be actually ripped if the panels are?
I wanna say a hundred acres.
But you're not gonna rip everything, because the panels are, you can't get there.
They actually, their design never ripped under the panels. They took into consideration the panels, and they ripped everything without that area. So everything they designed for is exactly what you're saying.
Can I ask you two more questions? One, when you designed the numbers for a pond. Okay, and what, what inch storm did you use to calculate that for rainfall? Did you use two inches, four inches, five inches, what did you use?
There's, there's several requirements for storm evaluations, because they have to reduce every storm that they look at. So it's from the one all the way up to the hundred storm.
Okay, and what inches would that be? No idea.
I don't have the zip, there's a lot of.
Because what I'm having a hard time understanding is, you know, when, when the chicken houses got popular in our area and went in, they had to get numbers calculated that if it it ran over, they had to have their neighbors sign off, or be understanding that it may happen in a hundred-year storm. Where's the numbers there that none of us had to sign off?
Not familiar with that, I am not.
Because I have pictures of guys, chicken houses here, there's no water in their retention ponds after all these rains. But yet, we're getting so much more water coming down off of there. And I know it's not all from there. I know it's not all from there. But they rolled the whole field, it's like an enormous hundred acres of ground. And I don't think any of that was taken into consideration.
The first design was not. When we had them come back, that was part of what they reevaluated. And as far as the sign off, frankly, I haven't been reviewing anything with the chicken house in this township. And the other ones I have, they need their approvals through DEP, just like they would if they were here. And as long as you're meeting the, the stormwater reductions by the township and by DEP, I've, I've never seen a sign off by property or, or.
We haven't, we haven't.
And, and you could, honestly, Ron, I just haven't been involved, but that's all.
So, one last question, you guys, if you had to do it all over again, would you give them the whole farm?
Absolutely not. I think a warehouse, which I thought was a much worse idea, simply because of all the trouble we had with them. And the blatant disregard from this township, and here we are.
I just wish you guys would stand up to them. I just got one more question. So, when they started rolling and you guys told them to stop, were they setting up the posts already for the panels?
We didn't, we didn't say stop when they were rolling. We were trying to understand what was, what were they doing. They said, well, we're rolling to level out the site, because their explanation was the height from the bottom of that solar panel had to be very precise, and we're trying to survey the whole thing and get that figured out. Our concern with, were with the compaction that was going on. And yeah, it had gone on for a little bit before we kind of connected that they were doing the whole site. And that's when we all started discussing this, with the same kind of proposed changing the soil amendments.
Correct, but did they already start putting the posts in for the panels, when you guys found out about it? Because if not, then they should have been, they should have ceased and stopped, or right there, and that ground should have been ripped right there.
I don't, I don't remember the, the exact timing on that one, I don't.
Does somebody know how they're gonna rip it?
They got a John Deere with a bat, with a, with an arrow on the back. The, the, the way it looked to me today is that they were trying to go between the panel rows.
Yeah, they do about two passes. They do about two passes per row with that, it's a, they can rip up at twenty-four inches, twenty is what it's required. They rip twice through there, and they come back. Yeah.
You measured they're down twenty inches?
Yep. And then they come back with an eight-inch till, well, they put an inch of sand on it, then they come back with an eight-inch till, hit that, and then they eventually seed as they go along after that.
So in order for this to be done right, for the lack of a better term, they need to be babysat. Is what needs to be done. They need to be babysat. I hate to say that, I mean, we're all adults, but they need to be babysat, so that they comply with at least this one thing. When I was here, I was here at either December or January meeting, and I know Brian wasn't here. But I voiced my concern that I thought it was energized, I was dismissed. Oh no, 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 it's not energized. Yeah, it was energized.
The panels are moving, it's a transfer orbit, you're humming.
Yes, yes.
I know enough about electricity, I know something's going on there.
So that could have, it could have been stopped back then, if I wouldn't have been dismissed.
I, I wasn't dismissing or trying to dismiss you, I don't know what the.
You were, you just, you just said, well, they, they were just connected to the to the substation there, that's all you said.
As far as that goes, I'm, I don't even touch, I don't know what, I'm not gonna stick here.
It's been a bad, it's been a bad situation, it's gonna continue to be a bad situation. It's our desire to get to the end goal here, we feel as a board, this is the best way to go about it.
So we need somebody to babysit them, that's what we need.
And we have had that discussion, and.
I, I will also say too, that the contractor doing the, the tilling is H and K.
Yep, that's H and K.
They're a local contractor, we deal with them, even the crew that's there, we deal with them every, every year on streetwork, construction projects. And as far as this project goes, responsiveness, clarity on what's going on, they've been very upfront. I deal with their supervisor every day anyway on other projects. That has never been a problem on our end, but yeah, we are. I mean, they've done probably four or five days at the end of the fall. On the other amended soils, we're out there every day checking it with them. We're planning on doing the same thing through here, but I, I will say, they're a local contractor that we dealt with. Everything I've seen from them here and other places, they've always been good at following through with what they need to do. I can't, I, I can't speak for some of the other experiences you've had and we've had with some of the other contractors on the site. I'm right there with you that it has been a struggle in certain aspects.
And they still are determined to run their vehicles on that darn road. They have all that packed soil there, but do you think that they stay all off the road now? They have to run, and that was a complaint all the time. They will not stay off the road. Their equipment has to go on the road.
I mean, you guys spent, I don't know how many thousands of dollars, I mean, I worked with the township for probably like ten, eleven years, and we blacktopped a lot of roads with them. And I know blacktop wasn't cheap back then, and, and they're just ripping up the road. It's breaking.
You, you mean Weaver's Road?
Yeah.
So I mean, the, the railroad pass is their only way to get back there.
I understand that. It's farther to that from Cleveland lines back.
But from the farm back to the bridge, has anybody gone under the railroad path, Sam?
Oh my gosh, there's such a big ditch underneath there, you can't really take your vehicle.
It's a public road? There's no liability to that road, I can tell you guys, you guys are now.
I would take my part back that road, it's bad, underneath that road.
What they had was broke off, I'm not understanding whether or not.
But why can't they go on that part where they planted the grass, instead of running on the road?
I mean, as long as they're gonna pay to re, re, reconstruct that road after they break it apart, I mean, I don't give a shit what they're on, that blacktop road. But it should not be divested so hard that nobody can use it, it is a public road. Well, and then right, right there from Weaver's, where I helped Donald put that pipe across the road from Kearns over to the, the Hefner Farm there for drainage. And that wasn't, I, I can tell you for a fact, that was not put in for eighty thousand pound vehicles to be driving that. And you drive over that, and you can back that road, how it dips at that pipe there. You know, it's gonna be a lot.
Part of the funding and the escrow is to, when the project's complete, go through Weaver's Road and do exactly what you're saying. And evaluate and figure out what they need to repair.
We're gonna permanently fix the other pass too. We had a long conversation about. We had a long conversation about that this week, with Robbie, we have a real good plan to fix that, we're a good curve in there, concrete. It'll be right when we're done and they're, we have their money to do it, so.
Don't cheat.
We have their money to put my farm back in place then when we get the water all taken here?
I don't, I think that's a different matter.
You think that's a different matter?
I think that's pretty much unrelated to what we're talking about here, I really do.
Wow.
I've looked at that, I spend a lot.
I think that would have been a easy point there. That's unacceptable, unacceptable. I'm not saying it's not all that, I get that. But you cannot sit there and look at me in the eye as a farmer and tell me them rolling a hundred acres, whether we wanted it or didn't want it.
I'm saying a lot of that exists in.
You know better, you know, you know better.
Do you have something for me?
Yes.
Can I say something as a family here? Sure. I have a question. So you have all these hopes and dreams that this is going to work. What happens when this is done and it doesn't work? And we continue to have the same issues, then what are we going to do?
When what doesn't work?
Uh, water runoff, uh, we continue to lose the Currie's Farm because it's washed down to the adult bookstore here. I mean, what, what are we gonna do then as like a township, how do you then fix?
Our goal was to reduce the water coming off there twenty percent.
What happens if you can't?
We think we're gonna get that done.
And if you can't?
We have, we have money to make sure the design is to get that done. That's the, we're, we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure it happens.
I'm confident we'll exceed the twenty percent.
Okay, I'm glad you are because nobody else here is.
I'll be impressed, if, if you, if you exceed that twenty percent, I'll be the first person to shake your hand, so we get a hell of a job.
Yeah, I, I think we can, I think that people.
I didn't design the place, I didn't, we did engineering, we spent a lot of money with these guys, they knew what our goal was. And with the amended soils, that's what we have to rely on. But it was a mess prior to that, when they put the soils in, it was terrible. So our goal was to reduce that and make it better, and, and that's still our end goal and that's what we're trying to do here in the end. That's our goal. And it's, you sit up here and try and do the best you can and make the best decisions you can for this, for the whole township.
And we had a conversation this afternoon about who would be the permittee on the temporary occupancy permit. What is your client's?
And if you're required to, to put DepCom on that permit because they were the original applicant for the building permit, I think is what I understood, uh, we're okay with that with the understanding that that permit goes with the land and the facility can be operated by my insular. And, and I, I do just wanna say, I mean, I, I fully understand at this point credibility is an issue with you all, but Heelstone has taken back control of the soil amendments work in large part because they've experienced a lot of the same frustrations as you have with the contractor that was on site and how we got to this point now. We tried and spent a lot of time and money with engineers in the fall trying to address the rolling issue. And I know one of the reasons that the work on the soil amendments didn't start until right before the end of the growing season was because we were also waiting for Conservation District approval of that plan for the soil amendments. And they did go back and do the testing, the infiltration testing to make sure that this plan works. And Heelstone, it's, it's fairly extreme for the owner of the project to take back a portion of the work from an EPC contractor and they have done that here to make sure that the soil amendments get done. And they're going to work diligently at, at doing that. They fully recognize the significance of this to the, to the board. And I don't know that, that we can say more at, at this point, but they do need to, they understand that they need to execute at this point.
Well, it's good they understand it, Rob. It's a big deal.
Yes, none of this was done, uh, none of this was done lightly. So I understand your frustration and, and your position on this and recognize that.
And I know it's not the right to do, because you represent your client, but flipping the switch without our permission was done intentionally and it was known about and it was done lightly. And if you'd be sitting up here as a board, that was disgraceful in your heart. We were very clear, we were very communicative in what we wanted done and they just kinda ram, ramshot over us because they figured they can and here we are in, in a bad position trying to. Our, our goal is still to get this done, but we needed to get that done and we needed to get done the way it was designed and no more nonsense. So because the next time it's not gonna come, it's too fair for us.
No, uh, we have what we need in order to have the board in a position where you can consider a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll make that motion. All in favor? Willa Crest.
I, I, I can only go.
People are frustrated, no one more than me. There's only so much you can do if you sit in a position like this and understand that. People that sat in a position like this understand that, it's very disappointing. Um, but that's the, that's the position we take and that's, you know, we do this to try and do the best we can. And we're gonna move forward and, and do the best we can to make sure the thing's right. Okay, Willa Crest open space.
I know the parks, uh, would you rather start with that open space as part of it?
Yeah, um, what do we have to talk about? Um, over at Grande, Bill Willa Creek, Willa Crest, and they have a few acres that they have to dedicate back to somebody. The original agreement was for the school to paint it and they do not want it, so Richmond talked about putting a park there and doing a dedication for them to help level out the land and get some grants, maybe, we have no parks or any facilities in the township. Get some grants to, uh, to build a park and a play area, maybe to go in and a ball field with Cleveland Baseball Association teams. I would like a ball field, another ball field. So that's what we're working at right now, we've got some designs here for a park. And some site developments that we got, um, Watkins to draw up and apply for a grant. Robbie, you wanna talk anymore or is?
Uh, I can.
Go ahead.
So basically, um, Grande has the open space, like you said, we're gonna try and get something done there to do it for the community. Um, what our first thing should be is to discuss what we try and want, what we want Grande to, to do before the dedication. Whether that's install a parking lot, do some ADA accessible walkways, whatever we can sort of bring to the table to put in front of them and try and get them to do before dedication, I guess we're gonna do the best thing. So I'm not sure what they are willing to do, I mean, at the end of the day, we still have the right to refuse the open space also. And, and the part I would just add to it, where there is, what do you wanna call that, the east side of Rhino?
Yeah.
They still have to get in there to, to grade that out. If nothing else, just to level it out and complete that part. That's, that a bare minimum they need to do work over there. The idea of trying to level it out, create an area for a parking area, the township would be able to provide the stone in that area, so that step I think is almost an understood that that would occur.
Right.
The question is, one of the options they threw out there is where that ball field is now, it's currently graded for two fields with a swell in the middle. They have said, look, obviously you're gonna have to balance that out to make this one field. They discussed trying to do that work or if there's another discussion to be had about something else, it would be better to do that way. But again, they brought that up and that was just kind of the discussion we had up to this point, anything else is?
Do you think they'd be going to do in the Air Force?
Or?
Football. Cause there's, there would have to be some.
They seem to be, they seem to be open, and I don't know if this answers your question, to remove the swell, try to cut a little bit on both fields and level that whole area so that's whatever we're looking for as far as like a clean slate.
Yeah.
I think we could discuss that with them instead of, they were basically kinda going in that direction. They, they verbally agreed to do the leveling of that, uh, the side that's closest to Cleveland Borough and do the, uh, do the parking lot and fill in the swell. As Scott said, I think we should try for a little bit more at the same time. The worst they can say is no.
No, it's really not hurt to ask.
So I'm thinking eliminate the swell, install a limit, uh, level that, that the opposite side of Rhino Drive, possibly do an area for a pavilion, a parking lot and the ADA, um, walk, walkways from Rhino Drive down, whatever that requirement may be is what I would recommend.
Yeah, if you could get them to do the earthwork, we'll do the rough grading.
I think leaning towards that would be probably the best bet because they're gonna be there with that anyway.
See if you can get that done.
Do we have any kind of plan to show them about what that might look like?
They have the grading, it's been a little difficult to try to get a plan from them that Watkins could use to, to create this. But they have that plan to ask them to show that. And I think that was actually, to be honest, they, they did offer to use their drawings to basically show what they do have to. To that point, they have to create the as-built or change the as-built and I think they understand that, so.
They say in order to get a commitment from them, it should be specific as to what the outcome is, that's expected, have them commit to that.
So the idea is try to take this base plan, get the grading, find grading for this, propose that to them. See if, see if possibly some of the ADA related grading out would be reasonable and then I'll talk, I'll talk to Robbie if I'm missing something on that before we approach him.
Well, this gives us a memory real idea of what we're, we're looking to ultimately come up with.
Mm-hmm, yep, and, and I, I, again, they, they keep pushing for dedication, but we keep pushing to say, well, we gotta, we have a better idea of what we want.
But now we have a better idea, see if we can come together and get it done.
All right, yeah, the, the grading, the only other thing is the lighting and then that's kind of.
Yeah, I wanted to ask the board about that, they, you know, we have been kind of pushing Ronnie off on, preparing the documents and, and having them dedicate the streets. Um, there's sewer lines that would be dedicated, there's, um, water lines that have to be dedicated, whichever thing would go to Cleveland authority.
I think, and I didn't get an answer back, I think those descriptions for the sewer specifically that only have been taken care of because they're operational and under money, if not.
You think they might have already been done?
Possibly, but I, I sent them, I forwarded them to stack back, just ask that question to them in their back.
All right, cause I got a whole slew of exhibits of, you know, uh, different facilities, storm work, so.
We reviewed all those and the, the descriptions.
But my question is, I mean, perhaps something has already been processed on the sewer site, but, um, is the board ready for me to work with Grande to start getting the paperwork in order for them to dedicate streets and other facilities to the township?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see what. And in terms of inspections, we're already good with that.
The only other thing that Robbie pointed out is the streetlights. Part of what they're saying is MedEd wants that streetlight agreement put in place. They have the post in, they don't get, they don't have the lights up. Still question whether or not that's a MedEd's requirement.
The lights will be dedicated to the township, township will have a duty to enter into an agreement with MedEd for the maintenance of those lights and payment of the electricity. You have the right to collect a streetlight tax from the residents to cover those costs. Um, do we already have streetlights somewhere else in the township?
We have, um, Virginville I think was the.
Okay, so, so this would just be additional.
And we have to get rid of this, if we do a tax for the streetlights too, we have to give that, I don't think we're charging the streetlight tax for that development.
No, we're not, because it hasn't been turned on yet.
Right, we're not, we have no cost yet. But what I'm saying is all of this is gonna cascade together with the dedication, with the bill, you know, MedEd is gonna turn on the lights and then we're gonna need revenue to cover those costs. So timing on that is up to you, but Grande wants it to happen.
Well, if they come together on this, I'm good with the rest.
Okay, all right, well then I'll start processing that application.
Did you get the grant application?
Yeah, uh, the best as we could, we could get, um, we, fortunately, we weren't able to come with an agreement with Grande showing that the township would take ownership of it, um, but we still submitted everything we possibly could to apply for the grant. So that's, that's where we're at now.
All right, thank you.
So our, our goal is to apply for a small community grant this year. Um, we're gonna continue this year to apply for the, I guess we'd call it the bigger grant for twenty twenty-five. And then in twenty twenty-six, that grant will hopefully be able to be used to complete the parts.
Sounds good, Robbie.
Is, is that grant a construction grant that could be used towards, or is it a, a planning? Um, there's, there is a fifteen thousand dollar grant that we also applied for to cover some portion of the design cost along with the small community grant.
All right, Robbie, I would suggest if, if Scott can get something worked out with Grande with regard to the improvements that they would commit to, then maybe we could finalize an agreement with Grande about.
Yeah.
That dedication and then maybe that could be submitted as a supplemental submission with the grant application.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if they will accept it, but that would be a possibility to do that.
All right. Sheets on an extension.
Um, Panoni simply submitted a time extension, actually they've resubmitted their plans to go back to the planning mission, but they submitted a extension to the township for the review till June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. I recommend accepting that time extension. We'll keep going, they've had a few, I think it's been a year since they really set up a planning mission, so.
I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Uh, street work that is out to bid, unfortunately with the timing, couldn't really squeeze it in to get open before this meeting. We're opening on Monday. Are you guys okay with opening on Monday, looking at the bid and making your recommendation at the next month? I don't think we necessarily lose.
It's a good thirty days, right?
I think it's like forty-five, but. If you're all over that.
Sit.
Motion on that grant?
Oh yeah, we wanna make a motion for the, good job, to rat, to approve this grant application, I make that motion.
All in second?
All in favor? All in favor?
I guess I'm up. We have in your packet a report of our analysis of our sewer documents and our sewer delinquencies. So some of these are coming off or are, you know, coming down, which is a good thing. We have a default hearing with the District Justice on the 329 South View property that's listed on the third page of our report. And there is a property that is going up in, it's back over $100,000. And I think, well, what we would recommend to do there is, that's the 420 Main Street property. We'd recommend that a new lien be filed because the amount is going back up and it's for periods of time that are not covered by the previously filed liens. And I don't know if you want to just have Jen first send one of those letters.
Yeah, I would send a letter.
Saying, you know, you owe us some money and see if Jen gets any satisfaction with that letter. And then if not, then next month, maybe you want to authorize me at that time to file the new lien.
Yeah.
So I'm not asking for any other action tonight. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Step back, nothing there.
Ruth? On step back, I just want to mention Fleetwood is looking for us to update the agreement we have with Fleetwood to meet new DEP standards that Fleetwood has to comply with, with their DEP permit in terms of the chemical composition of hazardous materials that are allowed to be discharged into the sewer system. Since we're almost entirely residential, I don't think this really applies to us in a substantive way, but it is a technical requirement that we have to comply with. So I'm working on an amendment to our existing agreement with Fleetwood to have us agree to comply with those discharge requirements. So I'll be bringing that to you next month, but I want you to be aware of when that's coming and why it's coming. Any questions on that? Okay. And that is something that Specback has asked me to do because Fleetwood's asking Specback to get the township to do it. I don't have anything else.
Okay, Roadmaster's report.
The only two things I really have is, Chris, do you, did you have time to review that agreement with Albany and Maxitoni?
All right.
I know there's been some confusion on.
Yeah, there has been confusion.
And the specific agreement we're looking for is, we got the agreement approved to work with Albany Township. The next to the agreement that I'm referring to would be to purchase the equipment with Albany and Maxitoni, where it calls out these specific amounts that each township is owed.
I thought we did that last month. Did we not do that last month?
No, it was actually for the approval of the machine, but it did not have monetary value as to which, how much each township was going to pay. There was no actual dollar amounts in there. And that's the one they're actually looking for. I think Michelle said she sent it over to you this afternoon and she was waiting on approval.
Okay. I apologize. I didn't realize that we had already not done that. So is it causing a problem for you?
Not at the moment, no. They're just waiting for it to be signed. We're still going through with doing the work. We just need to show ownership and pay the other parties, I guess, so to speak.
Let me see what I have from Michelle. If it's possible for the board to do this tonight, I'd like to get it off of our agenda.
You can look at that. What about the oil and chip bids?
I talked with Scott a little bit last week. What we're doing is Albany is, they put everything out for bid. We talked about budgets before, with you guys have discussed that. I told them we could do about roughly three miles. So they're taking care, they took care of all the bidding and then we're essentially bidding the oil. We already purchased the stone to do that. So when we accept the bid for the oil, everything will be billed in the thirds, our fair share. They'll spray X amount of gallons for Richmond, Maxitoni, and Albany. Everything's broken down individually. I talked with Scott about that. He didn't seem like he had a problem. Do you have a problem with anything that we're doing with that, I guess you would say?
No, I mean, they're publicly bidding it, they're getting it calibrated through Penda. I don't see there's any concern with what they're doing here. It's going to ultimately just take money on the township.
These are good?
Yeah.
Do they approve something?
I believe there's bids to be, I guess, approved. I believe Midland got the contract. I'm not exactly sure where they're from. I saw there was a couple.
Asphalt maintenance, Midland, and partners.
There were three total bids.
Did they say which one they wanted to go with?
Midland is a penny cheaper per gallon. And that's the same company that they used last year. And we helped on a couple of those last year and we were very happy with, the driver was super friendly. Working with this, considering it was the first time for everybody doing that type of work.
Well, that's quite a difference from the highest bid.
But we also get a better price on bidding it out through all three townships rather than individual bidding for us too, which is the main reason why we're going to work with the other three townships.
I make the motion to accept the bid from Midland in conjunction with the other two townships.
All second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We can come back to you, Chris.
Well, it looks like there were two resolutions for the examine and approve last month. And I'm just wondering why that doesn't suffice. It's for the Roscoe CSH chips, is that right?
Yep. And there would have been another one, Bonag Roller.
Yeah.
Would have been that same thing.
Yeah, there were two, I guess, two pieces of equipment in that agreement.
Yep.
The board approved that last month. And was there a different agreement that was attached to it?
There was an agreement that went over to, I think, Albany, if I'm not mistaken, and Maxitoni. And there was verbiage that needed to be changed. And I think that was the one that we were looking for the word document on it. And that's why it did not get through last month because we were still waiting on the document to come over to make actual changes on it.
Well, she sent to me an email saying that she reviewed the agreement that was signed for the purchase of this equipment and that it was okay, except she wanted to add the letter S, which I think we could not, we don't have to do that.
The actual agreement that they signed, I actually have in the file cabinet in the office. I can show you that.
Yeah, I think we're good to go. I don't think we have to do anything other than to sign that agreement based on the resolution that was approved last month.
Okay.
I think we're good.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, Secretary Treasury report.
The general funds, we had check numbers 11387 to 11426, including EFTs for $134,760.80.
Make a motion, prepare.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, we had no checks. Light fund, check number 2170 for $780.12.
Make a motion, prepare.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Sewer fund, check numbers 3186 to 3194, including EFTs for $35,209.10.
Make a motion, prepare.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Espro, check number 2177 for $741.
Make a motion, prepare.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And Virginville Fire Espro, check number 2177 for $741.
Make a motion, prepare.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And the only other thing I have is the tax collector sitting dates this month. Wednesday, April 17th, Thursday, April 18th, and there will be a zoning hearing board meeting after that one on Thursday. Monday, April 22nd, Thursday, April 25th, Monday, April 29th, and Tuesday, April 30th. All the times are from 5:45 to 7:00 p.m.
What was the first one?
Seventeenth. Seventeenth. The 18th is only hearing board will be here, so they have that one afterwards.
I will go with 17th.
Okay. 22nd?
Yeah, I'll be back in a second.
Okay. And then Brian, you have?
The last two.
The last two, 29th and 30th. Okay, so Sam, you have the 25th as well. What do we have, Scott?
Really?
Okay.
What am I, the 29th?
29th and 30th, Monday and Tuesday.
Is something debatable, Wes?
Absolutely.
Just make sure it doesn't conflict the other guy.
And that's all I have.
All right.
Okay, I don't have anything. Participation from the floor? Make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor? Aye.
What time is it? Seven.
I'm sorry?
Seven.
Yes.
You have, Chris? You stay home.
You don't want to miss it.
Well, you have copies of that one.
Well, I have the.